........................
......
The mission of the Exeter West Greenwich Regional School District is to empower students to contribute to school and community by providing substantial learning experiences in a safe, trusting, and orderly environment.
Thank you. Okay, we have open forum. Does anybody in the audience would like to speak on something that's not on the agenda? Can you raise your hand? Student, please, a month report. No?
Um... We're back. Three councils back, and the last month, all I really do is share with you. That's... All I have are, uh... Another thing I want to highlight, we're planning, we have thought about giving a award to teachers, another Teacher of the Year Award, where the students get to vote, and we're, right now, feeling out what teachers think about that. I know the students want to do it, but the teachers may or may not have some reservations on that.
Okay. Yeah? Congratulations, Senator. Who else is here to speak for him?
I do, please. Can I just say something? This is a surprise for no one. But, um, each year, as a school district that's a member of the New England School Development Council, the superintendent gets the opportunity to award up to two students, a student leadership and learning award, and, um... Because I just got this certificate very recently, I haven't filled out it, and I knew Noah was coming this evening, and, um, I am presenting this award to Noah Jassila. Thank you for answering.
And it just keeps coming.
Oh, it does.
Okay, good consent agenda.
Consent agenda includes the approval of the regular meeting minutes of September 22nd. We also have several appointments. One is a head golf coach. Um, we also have some current staff members who are increasing their FTE status. Um, I can explain each of them. The first one, Julie Ornudo, is our occupational therapist, and we, um, in my status report, you'll see that we are bringing another student back from an out-of-district placement, this was something that was planned. Um, we've had some increased needs in the district, and, um, she will... We need her to increase her status to 1.0, but the offset is, um... We'll be saving through the tuition savings that we have by bringing the initial student back in. Um, there is a... An increase from .9 to 1.0 for the remainder of the first semester, only for an English teacher at the high school. This has to do with some students who have increased reading needs and who needed to make an adjustment to the schedule, um, to accommodate those students' needs. And then, um, the last one is one that I've actually known about since September, but I didn't get around to putting it on the agenda. It's an increase from .6 to .64, and that is because of addition of advisory to the teacher's schedule. You remember that grade seven is the largest grade in the entire district, and with that increase of the number of students in grade seven, we didn't have enough advisories in place, so Jessica picked one. Um, we also have a resignation of a former golf coach, which connects to the appointment of a new golf coach, and we also have our home details.
Any questions?
Uh, if you could call the minutes, if anyone.
Any other questions to the consent agenda about the minutes?
So...
Seven. All in favor? I don't have any further questions. All the consent minutes, September 22nd. Second. All in favor? Correspondents. Any other questions on correspondence, comments? Okay, more to the under-connection.
So, I closed in your packets. This is the, um, budget projection for the 2015-16 school year. You can see in the revenue side, who we're talking about, uh, over the, you know, since actually the budget was approved, the governor's budget was approved, the change to the, um... To the revenue, what it meant to the district, and so you can really see it for the first time, uh, in this projection here, as it... In the specific lines for what we budgeted and what, uh, projected would be, what actually came to be, uh, with the governance enacted. Not surprised, but we look at it and see, you really see the reality of what happened to the district. The, uh, under expenses, um, as the superintendent just noted, the tuitions and, uh, POG 55,000 series, you know, we anticipate, uh, some savings in tuitions there, um, whether it's through special services or, uh, through the GO Tech. And then the, uh, 56,000 series, right now, I'm just showing the, um, the foil, uh, the savings that, uh, we executed, the oil that, uh, less than budgetary. So overall, um, you know, it's... It's looking okay. The audited, or that should actually say, that's a script note, or it should say unaudited for June 30th, 2015. We're in the process. The auditors will be back in, um... In a small.
And I know that I reported out on this, but if you recall, the non-public transportation offset, budget was 138,709, and then the projected was 12,444. That's the amount that we knew was incorrect, and I have the regular confirmation from the state that the actual projected is about $100,000 more than that. Um, but we, I think we have to report that separately, because we will be receiving that funding as a revenue from the state for this year, and then they will correct it. So that would make the operations balance around 75,000, which is consistent with, I mean, it's close to the figure that's included in my status report. It's within a few thousand of that figure, but that's the reason for the, for the differential, is that that $100,000 error, that ride mean calculating that, um, that revenue source for us is not included in this report. Because we haven't received the funding yet.
Will we all set them? Okay. Seventy minutes reports. At some point, Kevin. Probably at the building, with the section, and one where I need a delivery. I might not remember the features.
Do we have a, a, a call to start?
So, we have the town council, we have the, uh, back yet, not too good. We're really wrapping up the tennis courts and the, um, the safety, the safety project, all weekend. But I think it'll be before, probably within the next, um, five, six weeks.
Okay, I will roll the topic. Kevin, the back time, 2:00, last night, when we have, when we examine the four present.
I have not received that.
So I will ball on that. So, are you excited or are you... Where? Diane Spencer. Together. Diane Spencer. Diane, can you get in touch with the, um, town council chair, and add totally two residents from Exeter, also not just a town council member? Um, and then, if the three of you persist on locating people, because we know a lot of people are communities, um, so if you can get that met up. And I think we're all met up on last night. We're waiting on one more, and I'll follow on that. Okay. Uh, public status reports. Kevin, have any questions?
But you are just covering the, uh, the whole system.
So, um... Both three, under the capital, bottom capitalized, separate section, the data center backup. So, the narrative there kind of tells you what we walked into on September 21st, and they... The data center, for those who haven't, I know remember Raffinelli, just seen it, and I remember this from your season, sending his work over, um, in that, opening on those projects, so... The data center, where the servers are, and the servers are in a rack system, it's about as big as a refrigerator, but maybe eight feet high, and that throws off a tremendous amount of heat. Throws off a tremendous amount of heat, and it typically runs at around 75, 74 to 76 degrees in that room. There is a unit in there called a lever room, and that's just the manufacturer, and they're used on navigation systems, on Coast Guard colors, and Navy ships, and they're a very sophisticated system. And the sophistication comes in this, you can put them in a room, and they will cool the air, dry the air, add moisture to the air, and monitor the air quality, while with the same air in that space. So that's the sophistication of that system. So that, and what it does is it creates a, a room that's kind of self-contained and balanced. Now, the way it does this is it, it is discharging moisture through a pipe that goes out of the building, it is drawing in and cooling the air through a condenser unit that is outside of the building. On the 21st, the fan on the condenser became out of, we don't know why it became out of balance, and what it did is it cut into the shroud around the, um, uh, the condensing unit, and there was no... You could bend it, make it look like it would work, but it would go out of balance, and then it would risk further damage. Over the next 24 hours, that temperature went from 74 to 76 degrees to 96 degrees. And there was no... It was not going to be a quick fix to get this lever unit, the condensing part fixed, so a decision was made, and we go forward with the emergency procurement. And the pictures of that unit, it's shocking. That's a six, that's a six-ton unit. And I don't know if it really shows in this picture, but that is, like, as big as a full wagon. The thing is, it's awesome. But as you can see, the ventilation system is now, um, on the second page, you can see where we had to cut through a wall, and we're venting in between the drop ceiling and, uh... What would be the admin floor, or the ceiling of the, the fixed ceiling of the, uh, denison. So there's maybe a nine-inch area where that heated air is being discharged, and that creates its own set of issues for the long term. So, uh... So we went forward, the, the vendor of record, which is Lincoln Energies, and they're great, you know, Bill Plumlee has actually gone out and was getting quotes, they came back with a quote in the delivery of the next day, and here, in, uh, Lincoln Energies, we, you know, we use Granger, and we were looking at another house to try and get it. The timing and everything, they got it on, on site within the next day, for just over a thousand hours. Fortunately, we have Eastern Electric doing the exterior lamping, so they came down and they ran the, uh, the line, the lead for the 50M single phase. So within, you know, 36 hours, we were in a much more stable condition. However, as you can see, we cut through one of the particles, and that has its own issues, that's not a good thing, and then, like I said, we're discharging into that small space. Um, and we're, we're, the makeup of the air is from the surrounding, um, room, so you're pulling that air out and then you're cooling it, and then hopefully we're pushing it back in. So there's... There's a lot of engineering and mechanical stuff going on there. On October 9th, Louis Torrado was on-site doing the punch list for the safety project at RPS, he went down and took a look at that, and he's going to incorporate, incorporate what he thinks, uh, will need to be done. He's going to bring his engineers on-site, and we'll talk about that for us, we'll have a fix for that coming. It's, it is, it is a great piece of equipment, and, um, it is... I, I have to be honest with you, I thought we had better air conditioning temporary dock, because this was the fourth time we had an event. So we've lost power, we've gotten power back out of the previous three, one of them was due to the lever failure. And so, when we got that up and running, having not gone down there, I just thought, okay, they're cooling that area, and I don't know if it's actually down there, it's like, this, this is like shoveling against the tide, we are not going to beat this thing. So it's a great asset for the district, I feel very comfortable, and you should all feel very comfortable, that, that is, once it's permanently installed and engineered, uh, you know, for the, for the air makeup, that's a great asset to the district. But it also points to two other areas, and I know remember Raffinelli was asking about it repeatedly, and I talked to Louis when he was down there, and that is the, uh, protection of that server rack from his overhead pipes that run through there, so, they carry water. So if something were to, if there was a failure there, we would be in a real, well, uh... And then there is, again, uh, something that a committee will have to consider, is, right now, that system's on bad, every backup, so... That's something of longer term, but... Fortunately, we were able to respond, and not cost us a ton of money, and it's an asset that can be used and will be great for the long-term sustainability of, of that IT center, but it's certainly not the only thing, I think it serves as a harbinger for something, that would be a bigger discussion, getting it out.
Alright, thank you. That sounds like that unit could actually handle even more, so if you were to expand...
Oh, yeah.
It would still be good for you for us.
Yeah. Correct, and, and they're talking about how to tie it actually into the lever unit, they're gonna, you know, again, add something to that.
Alright, thank you.
And Nelson, come to the staff. I have one. Can we, can we talk a little about, under your initial information, the, um, you have ongoing concerns, a deadline regarding children's use of controlled substances, and I know we have all four of those concerns in our district. Can we get in touch on that?
Sure. I think what has come to our attention recently, and we actually have some members of the community who have reached out to the building principal as well to talk about some concerns, um, is an increase in what's called vaping, and, um, basically, kids, and this isn't just Exeter West Greenwich, but I think it's happening in many schools across the state. This is a conversation that's occurred at some of my meetings that I attend as well, but, um, kids are putting T, THC oils in whatever it is that they use to vape. It's like a vaporizer, it's like smoking, except without a real smoke. Um, and there are also other legal substances, like caffeine pills, that a lot of kids are taking, so they can get these things legally, but they're using them in a way of ways, and it's causing some concerns. I know recently there was an article in, um, a paper that was sent to us to review where a child, prior to going onto an athletic field, took some caffeine pills and ended up dying as a result. So these things that kids can obtain legally can actually have tragic results. Um, as a result of all of this information, we've met a couple of times to talk about some steps that we can take as a community to kind of share the information with the community members, and families, with students, to talk about the dangers, the warning signs, and how parents can work with us to kind of support, um, putting an end to this, this abuse, to whatever extent it is in our district. So, um, we are planning a parent forum on November 18th, and that's still being worked out, but we have solidified the date, because it doesn't conflict with any of the athletic teams and playoff schedules that may or may not be in place depending on which teams make the playoffs. Um, the high school resource officer, the principal, the nurse involved, say, our level support staff, myself. We've done some, um, review of the health curriculum at the, in particular, at the high school, and we're addressing some of these new concerns and this new information that we have through the, through the health courses at the high school, and, um... We, Mrs. Chandler is working on a special assembly for the students, and then we also have the, um, the police dogs, which will be coming to our campus on a more regular basis, just so that we can make sure that everybody is aware that we're watching, that we're looking at the issue, and hopefully we can put an end to whatever abuse is happening on our campus. Scary.
Question? Is, um, E W G S S plus plus? It's a phone?
Um, Dave, they will be involved in the planning of the, um, of the forum, the November 18th forum, um, and, you know, we have, um... We have a substance abuse counselor on our staff as well, who is going to be working with us and sitting on that panel, so we're, it's really kind of a very new condition that we're starting to put together, but we're... We know that we have experts that sit on our staff and work on our skills, and we're trying to involve all of them, because this really is a community, um, that they're all interested in.
Jessica. And, and Sarah. Can I touch upon the reduction of budget further, yeah, or further, if we can discuss some different subjects? Can I, can I talk for that?
Um...
Now, um, we have one. Number sixty-seven.
Yeah. So what's happened is, um, I incorporated that student return from the out-of-district placement that is actually scheduled for the day after, um... I think it's... Next week. It's, it's next Monday that the child returns, um, and that happens to be the day that our occupational therapist begins her 1.0 status. So that is appropriated savings, because this student was in the out-of-district placement, or will be in the out-of-district placement eventually, um, I've also included the offset of the occupational therapist. And then if you build in the added expenses of the, um, the .6 to .64, that advisory, the research, Jessica, that we approved, and, uh, .9 to 1.0 for that short period of time for the English teacher at the high school, it will bring you to around that $75,000 mark, that, um, so it aligns in the financial report, with the exception of that $100,000 error that we haven't put in, number four, yeah. So, even though we're working on these reports separately, because we're looking at two different sets of data, the, the nice thing for us is we're not aligned, which is what happens.
Yeah, right then. So the $75,000 exposure does not include the $100,000?
No, it does.
It does?
Yeah, it does, alright. So if you recall, um, we, we ended up receiving after the final budget that the governor signed, we ended up receiving about a quarter of a million dollars less than what was expected, and that would be on the initial reduction based on the funding formula. So we are seeing a quarter of a million dollars every year for the entire amount of time that that funding formula is being implemented, and then on top of that, after the fact, we got the reduction in that, in the transportation line. So, um, we, what, what this report was doing, and started as the last one, just on, right, or the others, but, um, this is just showing you that along the way, we are, um, kind of getting at that additional quarter of a million dollars that we had initially planned for, and we're down to a $75,000 exposure. So we started at about a quarter of a million, we're down to 75, which is progress. At the last meeting, we were at about $120,000.
Will we all set the reports? Great. Um, can we finish this? Can we finish with this? I was not able to see if we can, uh, for now.
Um, yeah, so this can, yeah, so they, uh, the punch list, uh, the walkover was done with, uh, Urbain's construction. The, uh, project is completed, there are two, uh, things that are being corrected. One is a relatively simple fix, that is, the, um, the panic bar on that Metcalf interior door just needs to be swapped out onto the opposite side, it's on one door, it's on the scan side. That's one, so that's a relatively quick fix, it might have already occurred today. Go Security is continuing to come back and service the interior doors, which are the handheld quicker, uh, release the interior doors and the exterior doors. There's some natural debugging that's going on as we bring the systems into alignment. I'm thinking we're almost there in what we're coming running into, it's intuitive, but there's... When you, there's a delay. In the northeast, we're not a variation people. No, really. So, they hear the buzzer, and they just grab the door and yank on it, and it doesn't, it's not, hasn't fully released yet, and that really has me concerned, so I'm thinking that, uh, Go Security, it was back again today, and they're almost at that point where they're going to say, hey, guys, I'm going to have to change your signage, and say, wait till you get the door released. I think that's what we're going to have to do. So, uh, but, so that's, the safety is all done, um, and I have to say, I'll say a word for you, uh, Urbain did a really good job, he did the construction, uh, they subbed out the, uh, the security to go electronics, and they did a fine job also, like, Urbain, I think the storefronts just came out of Austin, and I've gotten a lot of positive feedback, they really made it look like it is a long way, so, um, and they were great. The, uh, the next thing that needs to be done is, um... Louis Torrado and the civil engineer, uh, Dettek, Dave DiAmico, will need to walk the, uh... the tennis courts with an arrogant representative, Josh, who's on site doing the STEM part. So that's going to happen this week, and that, that project is all done. But they need to, for to satisfy the right compliance that you have that one during the final scan. So that's very good. The STEM project is crucial, and they're doing their thing, which is great.
Thank you. All right, I was right. Any other concerns? And what do you guys are looking, ideally, it should be people who have construction management, engineering, Quinn's, Malus, and Jacob. Am I correct in saying that?
Doesn't. Every age representative, if they have a great.
There is no, they can still make a contribution to the grant now. Okay, important meetings, we are supposed to be making on there. We are going to expect a session. Let's go ahead. Yeah, just, just right, right.
Make a motion to executive session under A265.
All in favor?